The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Welcome everyone to our town council meeting. Calling me to order and brides for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two present. Yeah. Oh, yes, roll call. How about that? Just skipping right over that. Well, because I see everybody's here.
Councilor Joel Chris Denson.
Here.
Councilor Jean Ollie.
Here.
Mayor Kuduski.
Here.
Councilor Luddy.
Here.
Councilor Taddeiro.
Here.
Councilor Payes.
Here.
Councilor Russell.
Here.
Mayor, your health form.
Thank you. So we have two presentations tonight, two proclamations. So we'll get to that. So the first one is Betty Tadashi. Glad to see her here and read her proclamation. Town of Berlin hereby recognizes Betty Tadashi upon retirement, 34 years of service as a Republican registrar voters for the Town of Berlin. Over the years, Betty shared very close quarters with Democratic registrars, the late John Miller, Charles Chuck Warner, Ray Joytner, and most recently, most recently, Kristi Miano. Her loyalty and dedication to the voters of Berlin will long be remembered within the Town. In recognition of her years of service to the Town of Berlin and the many contributions she made for our townspeople, the Town Council hereby salutes Betty Tadashi and extends to her best wishes for many years of health and happiness in her retirement. Dated, well, it was dated back in January. So, mind up, Betty, and we'll give you your proclamation.
Okay. It's sex off, still a little wobbly.
Appreciate you coming. Hope you're feeling better, right? I missed some nice stimuli. So congratulations very much. Thank you. Many, many years of service. You were a teacher before...
I was. Thank you very much. And it was really great work up for the Town of Berlin. I don't miss the stress, but I miss everybody here. So, thank you again.
Great. Thank you, Betty.
Can I have a glass?
Excellent. Yes, I have that.
Yeah.
I do have that.
Plastic, so don't get busted.
See, you know this.
Yeah, here.
We could afford the plastic, Betty, not a frame, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I have a spare frame.
Thank you very much. Thank you as always. And the second one we have is a proclamation for Evan Raca Piari. His Eagle Scout project. Hang on, let me read it, and I'll meet you up there even though I know you've already exchanged the proclamation. I was at his ceremony, but let me read a little bit about his project. So Evan's Eagle Scout project was the renovation of the Sheer campsite at Hatchery Brook. The project consisted of cutting tall grass in the campsite, clearing brush around the cabin, removal of bird and bees' nests, scraping of chit paint, with painting of the interior and exterior of the cabin, repainting a picnic table and building and painting a second picnic table, building a permanent fire pit with permanent benches around the fire pit. With these improvements, the general public and youth groups are now able to enjoy the site. Project took over 130 combined hours to complete with the help of 20 volunteers. So we appreciate that. You know, we've had a lot of Eagle Scout projects, and they do some great work for town parks and for the town in general, so we appreciate that one. So with that, let me read your proclamation, Evan, and I'll meet you up there at the podium. The Town of Berlin hereby recognizes Evan Raca Piari on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, Boy Scouts of America. In recognition of your commitment to your family, community, and the principles of Eagle scouting, the Town Council congratulates Evan and extends best wishes to him and all his future endeavors dated 27th of November, 2018. Congratulations, Evan. I know you got the real one the other night, right? The other day? So congratulations, and we will always remember your project and all the great projects that all the Eagle Scouts have done and will be doing. You know, we have another one to be presented tonight. So, you know, it's a great way that our young people, obviously, give back to the community, and it's a great way to start us down the road of, you know, community service, which all of us up here tonight and all, everybody on our boards and commissions, all volunteer our time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we are at our audience of citizens. So we have, so go with the sign-up sheet, and then obviously, one else wants to speak after. We have Gennaro Bizarro here to speak. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor. Gennaro Bizarro, 440 Shuttle Meadow Avenue, New Britain. I'm a candidate for the Beacon Six District Senate seat. There's a special election to be held February 26th. I'm here tonight just to make sure that everybody in this room and all the people watching at home are aware of a particular bill that has been proposed up at the legislature, which I think would have a profound effect on the residents of Berlin. That's Senate Bill 454. The bill purports to consolidate or compel the consolidation of school districts in the state based on the existing probate court map. So there's very little in the way of details, because it's early in the process, but the gist of it is, the upshot for Berlin is that Berlin's school system under this plan would be collapsed into New Britain's. Now, I think education is uniquely local in nature. You know, if we're talking about trying to find efficiencies by consolidating the operation side of things, I'm a proponent of that. But if we're talking about forcing school districts to regionalize and stripping local municipalities of their ability to control curriculum and make education decisions, I think that's a terrible idea. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. There's going to be a lot going on at the Capitol, a lot of debate over the next month or two, and I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of it. And of course, remember to vote February 26th. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the information. Appreciate that. Anyone else wish to address the council? Audience of citizens, my once going twice. Okay, close the audience of citizens. Thank you very much. And we will move on to our agenda, starting with our consent agenda. We have reviewed, all the councils have reviewed the consent agenda, and before we take a motion, do we, any of us have any questions?
I'd like to remove number four.
Okay, let's remove number four, and we'll put that in, what do you want to do? Put it in regular business? Regular business? We'll put it number one in regular business?
Let's put it two.
Two. Ah, two, yeah, yeah, I see. Yeah. Okay.
How about one B?
One B.
Sure.
All right, there we go, one B. All right. We'll get, we'll get there. Okay, so we need a motion on that? Just move it?
No.
Okay, so be it. It is moved. All right, so any other comments on the rest of the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion on the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the remaining items on the consent agenda tonight.
Do you second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, on to new business.
Okay, agenda item number one is to approve Nathaniel Hanson's Eagle Scout project for book exchange for books at the Berlin Elementary School libraries. And Nathaniel's here to give an overview of the project.
Right.
Hello, my name is Nathaniel Hanson. I am a scout of Troop 41. My project is building a book exchange box or a free library for the three elementary schools here in Berlin, Willard, Griswold, and Hubbard. These boxes are built for kids who can exchange book, put a book back in this box and then exchange it. I will consult with the three teachers in order to see what designs they would like and what I would like, and then compare and contrast the designs and make a design that we all like equally to build these boxes for the kids at the elementary school.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? No? We're good? Thank you. Love, appreciate it. Yeah, good luck with that. As we said, another great Eagle Scout project comes to the council, so we're very fortunate. We'll take a motion on this?
Okay, move to approve Nathaniel Hanson's Eagle Scout project of a book of exchange boxes for the Berlin Elementary School libraries.
Second. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Good luck with the project. We'll see you back here, I'm sure, when it's completed.
Thanks.
Excellent.
Agenda item one B is a donation of rounds and cars to the Kiara High School annual auction in a night under the stars. And John Zook is here to discuss any, answer any questions.
Thanks. Hey, John.
This was a donation that was presented to the Golf Commission, and the Golf Commission felt that there's considerable amount of individuals that go to Xavier from the Town of Berlin, so this is the reason why they're approving that.
You know, in the past, we've asked for a list of these and generally how much it cost us so we could budget for it, I think. Today, I haven't received anything, and I was wondering if you could relay back to the commission that we could, if we could get that information.
Sure, absolutely.
And I would move no action on this pending hearing from the...
You want to see that information first?
Yeah, because it's not till the end of March.
I would also like to want further. I understand that there's a one-year expiration on these?
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious if there has been in the past or if there could be done in the future in accounting of how many of these are actually redeemed?
Yeah, actually, we do do that. And when they come in, they're returned into the golf professional, and those sheets then go up to the treasurer's office. And to date, I don't know exactly how many they redeemed, but it's very, very minimal.
Is it?
Yeah. But I can get you to, I can get you to list that.
The only thing on this one, it's just an out-of-town school, just raised a red flag and...
Private school.
Yeah, private school, so let's talk about it once you get that information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. So if you could just bring that back for our next meeting, and we'll just...
Sure.
Add this back into the agenda, talk about it.
Yeah, just so that we, do you want a list of, oh, do you want a list of all of the ones that they usually get every year? So if there's 10 events, we list the 10 of them.
Well, yeah, we've asked for that in the past, and we haven't received it. We want to be able to plan for it and budget for it, quite frankly.
Yeah, and, you know, not to single out the Golf Commission or the golf course, but the other thing, I think somewhere in our agenda tonight, we're talking about, you know, when we waive fees for a lot of activities in town, and I know we had some figure, I think, last year, right, on what it added up to be, and I think, I know we've been talking informally amongst all of us here that, you know, some type of limit, at least an amount that we, if we reach, doesn't mean we wouldn't approve additional things, but just so we know what we're spending, because I think many times, unfortunately, comes to the council throughout the year, and, you know, we don't really, I know somebody keeps track of it, but sometimes we don't get that info, so we just want to be a little bit more cautious with every fee that we waive, just so we obviously try and...
That list is prepared by findings.
Okay.
And they do it every year.
Okay.
So it's easy for it to be forwarded to...
Yeah, we'll pay some more attention to it.
It would be all being that are waived.
Yeah, yeah, just to see, you know, just so we are clear, have it all on one list. I mean, I know we do. Yeah, right? And that would include the golf course stuff, too, so we're, again, we're just trying to make sure we pay a little bit more attention to detail as we go forward. That's all. Sure. You got it, stand up. It's not, I take it it's not the golf item, obviously? Yeah, no, I know.
I didn't realize that.
No, it's okay.
Galemere, 100 Till Wildomer Road. We appreciate that request, because if that document is something we would like to review, I would like to point out that that's actually not cash out of the budget for, this is a, it's really in kind, so it is actually no dollars. And we're, one of the reasons, I think, more so this year, we approved or recommended approval is that often what happens is they'll bring in other friends, they'll bring in groups, they'll stay and have lunch, and so we saw it as an opportunity.
Got you.
So, but we'll get you that information.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, we get that. We just, sometimes we just want to gather a little bit more so we have all the information before we make the decision.
Sure.
So we appreciate that. So, yeah, if you bring it, we'll be ready at the next meeting to move forward. Okay? So where are we at? Two?
Two. Agenda number two is authorization for the Town Manager to execute the commitment to fund a letter of the Community Connectivity Grant. This is a continuation of grants that we apply for to build sidewalks and make our town more connected, if you will, and give different ways of moving about the town. Chris Edge is here to discuss the project.
Thank you, Jack. Yes, this was a grant we received from DOT through their connectivity program. It does continue the work, most recently, that was done from Town Hall to Kensington Road. Additionally, the monies will go to connecting McGee, Willard, and the high school down to essentially Farmington Avenue, but really doing that as well as filling some gaps just continues with our work. The nice thing, too, is to give you state monies, and so far, it's been very well appreciated, especially Kensington Road, that I know people that do walk it. It's been a nice addition doing that, and so it just helps continue our work, and this allows Jack to sign the letter for the monies.
Let's say for two, walking on the sidewalk.
Yes.
Kensington Road, obviously. Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, take a motion?
Okay, I move to authorize the Town Manager to sign the attached commitment to fund letter for a community connectivity grant from the Connecticut Department of Transportation in the amount of $387,000 for the construction of sidewalks on Farmington Avenue, Mill Street, Four Rod Road, Norton Road, and Robbins Road, subject to review and approval of the Corporation Council.
Second. Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved.
Agenda number three is authorization for the Town Manager to subordinate the Town's right of first refusal with respect to 921 Farmington Avenue. We own the property there, and its mortgage on the 945 Farmington Avenue property, which is Amco Machine. And Chris is here to discuss the request.
Yes, this was a request similar to what we had seen previously. Essentially, the Town had a right of refusal to buy 921 Farmington Avenue. I believe this is when the police station was being proposed. And secondly, 945 Farmington Avenue, which is where AS Lubinik is, we've given them a grant through the SOD program. Essentially, what this is, it just subordinates it to the mortgage holder as they're doing a refinance. It doesn't change anything from our side, but essentially just moves us down so that the bank is in the higher position.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, take a motion.
Okay, we move to authorize the Town Manager to execute the attached subordination agreements with respect to the Town's right of first refusal to the purchase of 921 Farmington Avenue, recorded in volume 697, page 1,136 of the Berlin Land Records, and the Town's mortgage on 945 Farmington Avenue, recorded in volume 721, page 1,043 of the Berlin Land Records, subject to the review and approval of the Corporation Council.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved.
Agenda number four is authorization for the Town of Berlin to provide $1,000 in matching funds to the Connecticut Main Street Center. We've been working with the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain for grant funds to assist the Town of Berlin creating a Kensington Village on Farmington Avenue economic development area, and Chris is here to discuss that.
Thank you, yes. The Connecticut Main Street Program, I'd received a grant from the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain to assist the Town of Berlin, looking at the potential of having a Main Street program. Essentially, the idea would be to have people and businesses on Farmington Avenue to help us with the efforts. The $1,000 is part of the arrangement, it's a part of the matching grant that's coming from our existing promotion funds within the budget. And I'd like to invite Kimberly Parsons Whitaker from the Main Street Program to come up for a couple minutes and talk about our efforts to date and hopefully what this will do for us long term.
Thank you, Chris. Again, my name is Kimberly Parsons Whitaker. I'm the Associate Director of the Connecticut Main Street Center. We are a statewide nonprofit organization that helps communities revitalize or, in some cases, create downtowns. We have 75 communities across the state of Connecticut that are involved in our program, from tiny little village centers all the way to large urban downtown areas. So what we are proposing to do, and what we've been doing actually since July of 2018, is engaging with business owners in Kensington, in the area, within easy-walking distance of the train station. This work follows a couple of major things that have happened. This work follows a couple of major things that have happened. One really major thing is the new train station, the opening of the Hartford line. One really major thing is the new train station, the opening of the Hartford line. But it also is a next step out of the transit-oriented development study that was done a couple But it also is a next step out of the transit-oriented development study that was done a couple of years back. of years back. So again, I've been meeting with, Chris has great help, with business owners, independent So again, I've been meeting with, Chris has great help, with business owners, independent small business owners in Kensington, as well as last week with a couple of major employers small business owners in Kensington, as well as last week with a couple of major employers in the area, Berlin Steel and Fortunato Construction. in the area, Berlin Steel and Fortunato Construction. And this is basically to listen to them, to help them imagine and enliven this downtown And this is basically to listen to them, to help them imagine and enliven this downtown area, the area within walking distance of the train station. area, the area within walking distance of the train station. What I have been proposing to Chris overall in the scope of work is that we start by forming What I have been proposing to Chris overall in the scope of work is that we start by forming out of these conversations a Kensington Village Advisory Group. out of these conversations a Kensington Village Advisory Group. This is a small representative group of stakeholders, again, starting with the business community, This is a small representative group of stakeholders, again, starting with the business community, to monitor and encourage progress from the ideas that have already been generated. to monitor and encourage progress from the ideas that have already been generated. We've had a lot of fantastic ideas, from place-making, beautification of the area, We've had a lot of fantastic ideas, from placemaking, beautification of the area, to to getting the businesses to know each other, business-to-business networking. getting the businesses to know each other, business-to-business networking. At the same time, I would be then researching and advising management models. At the same time, I would be then researching and advising management models. By that, I mean an organization that really would represent the downtown interests and By that, I mean an organization that really would represent the downtown interests and move initiatives forward. move initiatives forward. We're looking at placemaking, making the Kensington area more visually attractive, more cohesive, more inviting to the public, as well as some marketing, an active social media campaign, some preliminary marketing and branding. It is not a branding consultancy, but it could lead its way to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If we could get some branding downtown, maybe, will help.
Yes, one of the nice things about the meetings we've held is it's been a great diversity of types of businesses. We've had someone in automotive, legal, retail, service, so it's been, again, large, small business owners, property owners, and larger employers. So the nice thing to do is gotten feedback from a number of them, and again, very early steps, but the nice thing, too, is we're going to look at the models that other communities have used, see what can work here instead of necessarily recreating the wheel.
What, there are some of the more recent towns that you've worked with? Um... I'm sorry, I need you on mic. Oh, I'm sorry. We have in, within our network, everything from downtown Bridgeport to downtown Torrenton to Coventry Village, so really rural area that has a village center. We also have in some of our larger areas, some of the larger cities, urban neighborhoods, which are their own transit-oriented villages. So neighborhoods within New Haven, neighborhoods within Hartford. So it's a really, among the state Main Street programs, and there are 44 of us across the country, ours is the smallest, but it's also the most diverse in terms of the types of communities that belong to the Main Street program. Is there like a timeline? Well, my work, this consultancy that's being covered by a variety of our grant sources, must end, I have a hard stop on June 30th of this year, but Chris and the community, you know, the stakeholders that I'm working with right now, they continue working with the Connecticut Main Street Center. I am always there. I'm the lead person on member relations within the Connecticut Main Street Center. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, other questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Chris. We'll take a motion.
Okay, move to authorize the Town of Berlin to provide $1,000 for the Economic Development Promotion Account for matching funds to the Connecticut Main Street Center for its planning efforts to build organizational capacity and to hold events in the Kensington Village Farmington Avenue area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Agenda number five is annually, golf course comes forth and gives proposed golf rates, golf course rates for the upcoming season. John Zook has prepared the 2019 proposed rates, and we'll present those. Also here tonight is Pete DeFazio, as Commissioner of the Golf Commission, and he also has discussion about an alternative rate proposal, I believe. So John will start off, and then Pete will follow.
Excuse me. The Golf Commission reviewed the proposed rates for the 2019 season, and per the ordinance, expenses must match revenue, or revenue must match expenses. A 4% increase was required for this to happen. And also in your packet, you'll see the 2019 proposed green fee rates and outing rates, the 2019 proposed specials promotional rates, 2019 proposed season pass rates, and you'll see a comparison of other golf courses to Timberland. Keep in mind that Timberland's golf rates are in 2019, and all the other rates in that schedule are 2018 from other towns.
Okay. So now while we look down the list here. All right.
Again, as Town Manager had said, that the Golf Commission also requested to have an alternate plan presented to the Town Council, and in light of some changes to the budget, golf course budget, Pete DeFazio is here to explain the alternate plan.
Great, thanks. Hey, Pete.
Hi, how you doing?
Welcome.
How you doing? Good, thank you. I have a proposed rate change that we'd like to propose when I handle the dollars. What you, what you were submitted in your packet is a 4% increase across the board. While the 4% across the board rate increase for 2019 meets the ordinance requirement mandating that projected revenue are sufficient to meet expenses on paper, we, as the Golf Commission, unanimously recommend that the council consider a secondary proposal we have developed. A tremendous amount of work by this commission, the director of golf, and our golf professional, has gone into putting this of rate structure we believe will generate more revenue. For as long as I can remember, we have gone up on our rates every year, and play has decreased year after year. It is a simple task to simply tack on a 4% increase across the board. However, we believe there is a very good chance of not even coming close to the revenue numbers expected, given the submitted proposal. It has been proven that merely raising rates does not work. Instead, we are encouraging you to consider a plan that looks to increase play, which in turn will generate more revenue as a result. You are probably wondering why we didn't submit this proposal in the first place. Well, following the deadline of submitting rates for the 2019 golf season, $21,000 for a proposed pickup truck has been removed from the expense side of things, while $27,000 in restaurant revenue was... this will generate more revenue as opposed to the submitted rates. We are looking at even more ways to decrease expenses and will make written recommendations to the Town Council. I would also like to point out that there are capital expenses which may not even be approved in our final budget, yet we have to take those into account when formulating a plan to match revenue with expenses. This council has put forth a commission made up of men and women that are golfers, business owners, skilled business professionals, and seniors. The commission unanimously agrees that what has been done in the past simply does not work and asks this council to agree and vote yes on our recommended proposal. And here are some of the exciting changes we look forward to implementing. A one-rate system. The one-rate system will simplify our rate structure while allowing our most loyal customers to purchase a benefit card, giving them an approximate 20% discount off of the one-rate. This will give them an incentive to play our golf course more often in order to take advantage of that discount. With only 20% of the daily fee rates coming from residents, it was decided to eliminate resident rate categories and offer a benefit card to them as well. Again, this will simplify our rate structure and make it easier to understand. With that said, the resident benefit will not disappear. Residents may purchase the benefit card for $25, which is $75 less than a non-resident benefit card, and will get an extra 5% off of the daily rate. In 2018, season pass rates were frozen while all other daily fee and special rates were increased. For this season, each category was analyzed to determine which categories were thriving and which were not. We also analyzed each season pass category, again, a detailed and refined process to make specific recommendations to increase rates in high-demand categories while remaining constant in those that could not tolerate an increase. With over 12 leagues and numerous large outings already established at Timberland, it was decided to keep league and outing rates the same to ensure we keep them here. Increasing the prices for these would most definitely entice them to shop around, which could lead to a potential loss. The specials are our bread and butter on weekdays. We analyzed our existing specials. We've also analyzed underutilized portions of the T-shirt that could benefit from specials. We came up with specials and prices that we feel will drive more play. Also, seeing a slight decline in junior play, we decided to add a junior special on weekend afternoons. It is without question that the face of Timberland belongs to our golf professional, Mark Barham. Mark has been a major factor in developing creative programs to not only increase revenue, but get more of our community involved in the game of golf. To name a few, Mark has increased league play to full capacity where they were all nonexistent before he came to Timberland. Mark hosts night golf a few times a year, which is enjoyed by hundreds of golfers. On non-peak hours such as Friday evenings, Mark has developed the Nine and Dine Mixed, a nine-hole event of teams comprised of a male and female. This event not only generates revenue during a slow period, but also brings additional revenue to the restaurant. Mark is also responsible for a change in starting times this year, which in turn resulted in a better pace of play. I can go on for hours about the special clinics and the children and adults that bring families together and gets them interested in the game of golf. Under Mark's guidance, the entire golf staff is professional and welcoming and reflects positively based on all the reviews posted online. I talk about Mark here because if it were not for his creative thinking, Timberland would not be generating the revenue it does. Last year, we experienced the worst weather conditions in recent history, yet the golf course held its own. In closing, I ask you to seriously consider this plan as we firmly believe it has the best potential to drive more revenue. Thank you.
I'll take questions if you have some. Thank you, Peter. Go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
Can we be solvent? I mean, will you reach your goal of being even with this plan?
Yes, you will. That, based on the ordinance, we have to.
Yeah.
Correct.
So this, this does what the other proposal does, but it's more golfer-friendly and more Mark-friendly, if you will.
Correct. And we couldn't, we weren't able to do that before, the changes of the pickup truck. And we've added the restaurant rent revenue in, to the revenue side. So that allowed us to do what we feel is best for the patrons and golf course.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we appreciate the work. I know you guys put in a lot of time, members of the Golf Commission. I commend you, having been to one of those, one of the meetings. And we were in the beginning, I was there for a while, went into another meeting, that was over, came back, and you still were in the meeting. So I give you credit for all the time you put in, and you've definitely zeroed in on Timberland and, you know, along with Jonathan and Town Manager to, you know, turn it around. And you've certainly, from what I've seen and read, you've certainly got it going in the right direction. We certainly appreciate that, your hard work. So what would say to the rest of you? Any other questions?
I just want to say congratulations. This is very impressive. It's obviously very comprehensive. You guys did a great job. And I have to err to your expertise and your exhaustive work that you're going to break even at the end of the year. My question is the Timberland benefits card. Is that kind of exclusive to our town? Did we come up with that on our own or is that?
Actually, there are other area golf courses that do it.
And have you analyzed how successful it's been in those towns or?
Well, we did it last year with the not, just simply the non-residents. And for the very first year, we generated almost 90 of them.
Because it encourages people to keep coming back.
That's the whole plan, you know? We get, we get a little vig up front, and then because of, because they have that benefit card and they get a discounted rate every time, we try to keep them playing at Timberland, which in turn creates more play. So they'll play here.
Maybe they'll grab something to eat, they'll buy in the pro shop.
Sometimes he has a good crowd up there for sure.
Yes. I just wanted to, you know, so one of the reasons I supported the Golf Commission was just to get a different set of eyes, different opinions for people that are there more often than I am. And for me, the simple application part of it is, it's a good idea. I see that in a lot of other places too. So I kind of like what you've done, and I think it'll work. We, you know, we want to keep the people that have been using the golf course there. I don't want to scare anybody away either. I mean, I know the golf industry's been going up and down for years. This golf course heads upside down too, and the weather was a factor everywhere last year. So it's, it's a problem for everybody, not just here. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Yeah, we thank the whole commission. You work hard, good group of people.
Yeah. I, as a recommend, if you, if the commission, council would consider, if they're going to consider the alternate plan, the only thing I would request is if you would defer, excuse me, delay the vote until next meeting, allow the Golf Commission to just go through and sit with Kevin Delaney, our Finance Director. Let's take a chance to make sure all these figures come out and they support, support the data that we have, and then bring them before you again next meeting for your approval.
I think I would prefer that too. It's enough to be able to.
Yeah, no, I agree. It's a lot of information tonight, so, yeah.
I'd want to know that it actually works, not just something on page.
I will say that these numbers were provided by the town, not us. So we had nothing to do with the figures.
No, I think just the two-week delay, also because really, it's really not on our agenda. It's kind of a different budget, right, than what we have. I guess we can change it, but I think if we just take the two-week period to digest it a little bit, but.
Respect that.
You know, it, you obviously put a ton of work in on it. We get it, and we appreciate that. And, you know, if it, if it works, I think that's fantastic, you know? It certainly looks, on the surface, to be a pretty solid plan. I guess put a lot of time in on it, so, yeah, let's just get it, Kevin, make sure it's through that, and then we'll put it back on our agenda.
Yeah, just remember, the outings are bread and butter.
Yeah.
So we don't want to lose leagues.
No, right, no, no. You've made some very valid points, and, you know, we want to keep it going in the right direction, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Peter. Thank you. Thank you, John.
I don't know numbers. I don't know numbers. I'm very. What it is, is the 2019 fee schedule, other fees other than the golf course. We have many other fees that we, each year we go through as a committee, we review, and then we propose rate changes, either the same or rate changes for each year. Kevin's going to make sure to update the fee schedule.
Hey, Kevin. Speaking of you.
Here you are. I think the rest of the night is me, so.
Oh, we are honored.
Well, as Jack mentioned, included in the fee schedule is, are the golf rates as proposed by the Director. But there are some other fee changes as well. Those are highlighted in the packet that you have. I'll just draw your attention. There is a summary page. There are three new fees proposed. One is a notary fee. This is a standard fee, but it's new at the library because that's a new service that the library is offering. One of the big pluses is that the hours at the library are different and longer than the Town Hall, so it provides similar services available to Town Hall, but for more time. Another is an unpermitted fee. This would only be charged if somebody has done work without the proper permits. It is against state statute to charge a penalty, but an unpermitted fee is permissible. So that's from the Building Inspector's Office. The hope would actually be that we never charge that fee and never have to charge that fee, but it would be available if needed. And then the last fee is a mattress box spring removal fee. This is designed to recoup hard costs that the town incurs. If an individual wishes to have a mattress or box spring picked up curbside, they would contact the company. The company would then contact the town, who would receive the $15 fee, and once that's received, the town would schedule a pickup curbside. The container at the down on Maserio Drive would remain absolutely free, so continues if somebody brings their mattress down there, there would be no charge. And of course, somebody buys a mattress can arrange for pickup and removal when they buy the mattress from whatever company. So this fee would only be for those who wish to have the mattress picked up curbside. And again, there's a hard dollar cost from the company who comes and picks it up and takes it away. So this is designed to simply offset that cost and not burden all taxpayers with the cost for a select few who choose to have a pickup.
Can I ask a question? I just, in my job, I buy a lot of mattresses for a lot of patients, needy patients. The near fee isn't 15 when I buy them, it's 18. How come they're not doing 18?
We're basing it on what we're being charged.
Okay.
So we could charge 18, but nobody was looking to make a profit on it. It's simply to offset the cost.
So the vendor is charging more than they're charging.
Could be. I don't know what their disposal cost is.
I'm trying to write on commercial shop. The mattress is wired up on hard dumpsters, we get charged 20 for me. 15 is very reasonable.
Yeah. And again, it's only those who choose to have it picked up. If somebody drives it to the station on Maserio Drive, they can dispose of it free of charge.
The state implemented a program several years ago where they actually, you, when you buy a mattress, you pay for the disposal. And what they did is they contacted the towns and informed the towns that if you put it, if you put a box on your property, they will, you can have residents bring their mattress to that at no charge. I mean, no charge to residents at the time, you paid for it already. What Kevin's alluding to is that now, right now, our residents will have it picked up at their house, so the disposal fee, the $15 he's talking about, it's not the disposal fee, it's actually the pickup charge, you know, the laborers will all pick it up and take it away. The disposal fee's already been taken care of. And so what we're trying to do is say, there's a program in place, our residents, if they take it down to the recycling center, there's no charge. If you want to have the convenience picking up your house, it will be $15.
The other two items that I'll note are fee changes. One is the removal of overdue fines for seniors and for children at the library. This has actually already been implemented. It was found not just here, but throughout the library network that the library director interacts with regularly, that the fees were actually determined for people coming into the library. It actually created a situation where people just simply weren't returning and taking advantage of it. So they've moved from a fine policy to an auto-renew policy. So they will auto-renew the books with the idea of continuing to have people enjoy the benefits of the library. At 5 cents and 15 cents, this is not exactly a major revenue grab for the community, so it is not a significant hit to the budget, but hopefully is a benefit to residents who enjoy the library.
I have to tell you, I love that. It's so cool. You get an email, the book's been renewed, it's wonderful.
So they've already implemented it, but, yeah. The second one I'll point out is under Parks and Rec. In today's structure, you're able to rent a field for a day. There's a rate if you, if you're a group and you rent for an hour, you rent for four or five hours, there's a daily rental rate. That's not, that's uncommon compared to other communities, and really is a disadvantage for those who wish to use the fields. So Parks and Rec proposed, and the Parks and Rec Commission approved, moving to an hour-per-hour charge, so that folks will be able to rent the field on a per-hour basis. And this doesn't apply to local youth groups or currently exempt, they would remain exempt, but it will move the town to more of the standard per-hour rental charge. And those fees are outlined in the document in detail. The other fee changes are generally pretty standard. We have the cell tower out behind the building, and contractually, there increases 3% every year. And the Health Department increases its rates, and as included in the motion, I would just ask for the ability to update the schedule. They typically are updating their rates between April and June, so when they update them, we'll just update the schedule at that point.
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
It seems like if we were to approve this, we would be approving fee increases that are consistent with the first plan of the golf course rates.
We'll take that out.
Oh, amended, yeah.
We'll take that out.
I have a question. We, it was my understanding that Zip-a-Deli would not be rented to an out-of-town entity. And I see here on a fee schedule, there is a fee to rent to use Zip-a-Deli by a non-local entity.
My understanding is the Parks and Rec group will prevent that from occurring. The fee is there in the event that there is a decision to change that.
Well, it's not my first rodeo panel. Maybe we need stronger language in there. I'll let it go over the top, but I may come back and revisit this.
The only other thing I will comment on, and I'll talk to the folks with the Golf Commission. What I will say is that the proposed rates for the golf course are based on last three-year average of play. There are a number of rates in here, so one of the things I would caution is that the proposal that the Golf Director spoke about was based in assessing those rates against recent history, but multi-year history, to try to mitigate seasonality. This was a particularly bad year this past year for play. You go back two or three years, they were actually playing into late December. So year to year, it varies. So whatever, whatever fees the decision is made, I think they will obviously do everything possible to generate as much revenue as possible. I would just caution that there are, there are historical play patterns that have been used to make sure or to put the town in the best possible position to make sure that revenues match expenditures out there at the course, and that whatever we use, I hope over the next couple of weeks, to look and make sure that we're, we're using some historical play so we understand that we have a reasonable opportunity to achieve that goal. Certainly, there's no guarantee. We discussed this actually at the Board of Finance meeting the last time, and one of the questions that came up was, what happens if we don't achieve this? And of course, you know, we just do our best. We're doing our best with historical play and what the rates would need to be to achieve that goal and establishing the budget. The weather and many other patterns are going to affect that, but I would say whatever we use, it should be based in some sort of a level of historical play so that at least you can have confidence that there's a strong analytical basis for feeling confident that the revenues expenditures will align. With that, I'll stop.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, so any questions? So we'll go ahead and.
Okay, I will move to adopt the 2019 fee schedule as proposed by the Revenue Committee and to allow amendment of the fee schedule to include updates to the regional health dis- district fees, Timberland Golf Course rates, and other statement fees when they are made available.
Second. Bless him. Thank you. Okay, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number seven is a transfer of assigned fund balance to the school security fund. This is to cover costs associated with the school vestibule project, which is still on schedule. I did talk to Doug today, and some of the components are already coming in, and we are still scheduled to start at Willard School in April during the vacations.
All right. And Kevin is here to answer any questions. Kevin, you're here again.
They come here for the ratio. So this, at the end of fiscal year 2018, there was a surplus, and the council and the Board of Finance had agreed to assign a portion of that surplus to help avoid the need to bond for a portion of the cost of installing the security vestibules. So that money was assigned. This step is formally appropriating the money. So what we're going to do is transfer it to the school security fund. It right now would sit, if you were to look at our financial statements today, the general fund would show you an assigned and an unassigned fund balance. Unassigned is kind of the bank account we can use if things come up. Assigned is what is typically done within the budget, but in this case was done because we had a surplus. So this will actually transfer the money to the school security fund and appropriate to the vestibules. That will allow us to use the money to pay bills for the vestibules. So this is really just that last step of what we've already done.
What's the total for the whole project?
A little bit over $900,000.
You can ask for three schools? Four?
Is every one of them but the high school, the high school vestibule is done with the renovation? We do also have a security grant. The town was awarded a competitive security grant of just over $700,000 about two years ago, and included in there was Berlin High School, so there's been work done to enhance the vestibules, the glass work in front. You had approved a transfer probably two meetings ago, move some money to be able to install bollards in the front, to protect the front area. So even though the security vestibules may not be provided for the school, there is work on all five schools related to security.
Great. Okay. Glad to see it's moving forward and on schedule, and the bollards went in. I know we have some more security updates coming up as well, hopefully to keep our schools secure, so.
Jack, you said that if they're on schedule, any issues with procuring materials? I see a lot of these bids out there lately.
So far, I talked with Doug just before the meeting tonight. He said, no, actually, some of the materials are coming in, and we are still on schedule for an April start date. And just, you mentioned the bollards. The bollards are scheduled to go in. The school requested that we wait until April vacation to not interrupt the school flow. It'll be done during that time.
Thank you. Great. Thanks. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, we'll take a motion.
We'll move to transfer $237,000 of the assigned fund balance to the school security fund, and to appropriate the funds to the four school security vestibule accounts.
Second. Thank you very much. Any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Agenda item number eight is the federal employee tax deferral program. We had talked about that in the previous meetings, and for federal employees who were out of work at the time, they'd gone back to work and there is a delay, or excuse me, there is an end date, depends on what the agreement between the federal government is. But at this point, we did the research. Kevin Delaney is here to talk about, you know, as far as the program that the state has passed, and our thoughts on as far as the town of Berlin. So Kevin is here to discuss that.
Debbie Swan, our tax collector in her office, did a good deal of work within their professional organization, as well as incorporating the state statute work. They drafted the attached application and the terms that were in there. The intent was to try to provide a program that could help those who need some help during, fortunately, was the government shutdown, and hopefully it remains a thing of the past. At the same time, also making sure that the town is protected, that nobody's taking advantage of it. And so some of the stipulations you will see are to make sure that people aren't taking advantage of the community or the program. For example, it prevents folks from receiving a refund. So if you've already paid your taxes, you can't come in and say, you know, I'm part of that group, give me my money back. That part wouldn't be included. There are several others. And the last bullet I will point out as well, which was guidance from the town attorney, that any of these programs, and this is what was written in the statute as well, that you have 60 days, up to 60 days at the end, and should you not make good on the taxes, then all of the interest will be retroactive. So it's trying to give people an opportunity, but not an unlimited opportunity, and it certainly doesn't mitigate any currently outstanding taxes. So if you are delinquing your car taxes or real estate taxes prior to this fiscal year, that delinquency, the interest and penalties continue to occur. I'm not sure that you even need to or want to vote at this point, given what the federal government has done.
Yeah, it seems a little, I mean, they're back at work, they're getting their back pay. They always do get their back pay, having gone through it myself several years ago. We always do get back pay, and if we don't get paid for a couple pay periods, but...
Should that change, you at least know that this is available if you're interested.
It's true. Do we know how many federal employees live in town, by any chance? Out of curiosity?
Don't know.
We have no clue, probably.
We don't, we don't believe that it's a large number. If you were in Windsor Locks with the TSA or Groton with the sub base, you would expect a large population.
Is this a tax deferral program that's applicable only to a specific time period, or is it a plan that's in perpetuity for another?
It was applicable only until the end of the federal shutdown, and then from that point to 60 days, and it was specifically in accordance with the bill that the state legislature passed.
So shutdown's over.
It wouldn't apply. Even if you put this in place, it wouldn't apply because the shutdown doesn't exist.
So what's the point of putting it in place if it doesn't apply? Under the other state statute, it doesn't apply? All right.
Well, unless they go up to 15.
Yeah, but the legislation doesn't cover that, right?
It's only limited to the December 2018 shutdown.
Okay, so it's not even related.
They have to pass new legislation. If the government shuts down again, they'd have to pass another one.
And then you can bring this forward.
Yeah, and should they? We would, we would look to propose...
Yeah, same. Right. The state would have to come up and change their legislation, so it doesn't even apply, right? So...
Yeah, the taxpayer would not be able to sign the affidavit that's required because...
Yeah. They're back at work, they were back at work for that timeframe. Out of a moot point, I guess, right?
Which is a good thing.
Yeah, no, it's great. Hey, they're back, they're getting paid, they're working, that's all good, you know? Paid vacation, so that's good. So, yeah, I just, no action on this, I would say. Basically, like, there's really nothing that applies.
Agenda item number 10 is periodically, we have to update our policies, and recently, the finance department updated...
Nine.
What's nine?
Nine. See, we are paying attention, believe me. I started believing.
I moved this along, I guess. Sorry about that. I moved ahead. Number nine is to deauthorize debt and expenditure authority. So Kevin is here to discuss a resolution as far as making certain findings with respect to the completed caper projects. Kevin's here to discuss that.
This is unusual territory. It's a debt resolution to deauthorize debt. Over the years, we come, you know, we come to you and ask for authorization to borrow money for various projects. And the authorization is typically greater than what we expect to spend, often because we have contingency built in in case something were to go wrong. The intent is always to borrow only what we need, and we're implementing a new process beginning this year, or resurrecting the process, so that what bond council and I are going to do is get together every January and review our authorized but unissued debt. If you were to look at our CAFR, our annual report, there's always a schedule in there that shows exactly what's outstanding. So in reviewing that, we looked through, or I went through and looked at all the projects that were there. The projects that you see on the list are all completed projects. Many have been completed for several years. It's over $4.6 million. Essentially, what this is, is periodically looking at, if you think about it on a personal standpoint, you've got 10 credit cards, three of them you've never used or haven't used in years. You call, you cancel, you cut them up, and they're gone. That's essentially what we're doing here. You know, the biggest one is the I&amp;I project from 2013. That was the Webster Square project. We're approaching almost halfway through repaying that loan. So the project is long gone, and I think if you go through each of these, you'll see it amounts to a decent amount of money. It's a prudent thing to do from a ratings standpoint. They like to see that you're managing your debt, not just controlling the volume, but also regularly evaluating what you have out there, and do you still need it? So the request here would be to deauthorize the debt, and we would no longer be able to borrow off of these ordinances.
Does this reduce our bonding indebtedness?
No.
Doesn't?
Because this money was never borrowed. The debt was never issued. You know, for example, police radio station, we were authorized $1.8 million. We spent $1.6 million to complete the project. This would simply say, you don't have the option anymore to borrow the $200,000. Doesn't mean if something came up, we wouldn't come back and ask for a new ordinance, but we really should be going through and cleaning these items up. There is still going to be a decent amount of authorized but unissued debt. We have a couple of items that probably will remain there in perpetuity unless they're used. For example, there's two instances of open space ordinances, and those will stay there so that if the town has an opportunity to take advantage of favorable circumstances and wants to leverage, to take advantage of an open space opportunity, we do there and available. But these are more projects that have a finite life, and now they're done.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll take a motion.
Okay, move to approve the resolution making certain findings with respect to the completed capital projects and repealing remaining authorized but unissued debt and expenditure authority for such projects.
Second. Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move.
Okay, now, number 10. I was trying to get here. Again, this is just an update on the debt policy, which has been modified to reflect recent SEC amendments. So Kevin is here to discuss those.
As Jack mentioned, the SEC, the SEC has been evaluating municipal debt specifically, or, excuse me, non-general obligation debt. So private debt that maybe you would have had separately from a bank. When we do a general obligation bond offering, we will have an official statement. There'll be a call with a rating agency or potentially a couple, and there's a public disclosure of what's happening. And that official statement is publicly known, and everybody's able to embed it in that official statement are all of our financial statements. When you do a private placement, you're interacting directly with the bank, and what the SEC found was, many organizations were not continuing to disclose that that additional debt was being undertaken. So if you think about a bond holder, you had no debt outstanding, and now you come to a bond holder and you borrow $10 million. If, after borrowing that, you pay it for a year or two, and then you go off and borrow $20 million in a private loan from a particular bank, you've just become significantly more leveraged. And that bond holder has a right, as far as the SEC is concerned, to know that, to know that the risk has increased, especially because our bonds can be traded in the marketplace. So somebody who isn't necessarily in the first bond holder, somebody else who's buying has the right to know your full position, and if you haven't disclosed it, then they might not have any way of knowing. So these rules are really intended to make sure that communities understand that we have a responsibility to alert the public, and it actually requires that they be alerted within 10 business days of the event, so that they have an opportunity to make their decisions with the best information possible. So it's updating for two new requirements, and then finally, it defines what a financial obligation would be. So, you know, in this case, for example, the town would actually be required to disclose within 10 days of having entered into the interim financing for the latest clean water fund loan. So that is an example where the town recently has engaged in something that would not be considered a general obligation bond. It's a loan between the town and the state. And if we don't disclose that, the rest of the world may not know, at least until our financial statements come out next December, that all of a sudden, there's now a new clean water fund loan out there. This just updates our policies to say we're going to comply with it.
Okay, we hear you. Any questions? Hearing none, take a motion.
Yeah, we'll move to adopt the amended town of Berlin debt policy to include new continuing disclosure requirements as required by the SEC.
Second. Okay, any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So move.
Agenda item number 11. At your last meeting, the council requested that we come forward and talk about the audit recommendations for 2018 audit. So Kevin has come tonight to give you an update and a summary of what we've got.
Okay. As part of every audit, there is a report, communication of internal control-related matters, and the first thing that the auditors will talk about is whether there's a material misstatement or an environment that might foster an opportunity for material misstatements. So I'll start by saying our auditors said that doesn't exist here. That is not an issue with the community. It hasn't been an issue for as far back as I can read and find in the financials. What they did do, however, was identify some operational improvements in areas where we can improve. And so we looked at those and are working towards those. So in the, in the agenda item, I've kind of split them into two buckets. One is completed, and one is in process. The golf receipts recommendation, the recommendation was to strengthen some of the controls around golf receipts. We are now, the golf course is producing duplicate receipts, so they're handing one receipt to the customer, and they're retaining them. On a weekly basis, those are being sent up to finance, grouped by day, and then within finance, we're taking one day out of each week and comparing it to the accounting reports that have been submitted, to make sure that the receipts support what we're seeing in the financial statements. That was instituted in November, and obviously, the play of golf was not where it would be in, say, June. So we've started that. Certainly, the course is closed now, but we intend to pick it up in the spring when the course opens back up, and that will be a weekly process. Second is controls for comp rounds. And the golf course, the director of the golf course and the head golf pro are the only two authorized to offer comp rounds. They require a card to be shown, so they've instituted specific controls and processes at the golf course to avoid somebody just walking up to the counter and getting a comp round because they're somebody's buddy or whatever. So those are the two that I would characterize as completed, that we've addressed the intent of what the auditors were looking for. The in-process elements are ones that have a certain amount of technology involved that we have to work through. Rain checks, we are working with the outsourced vendor to determine if there is a way that we can create a numbering system or some sort of process within the technology. We are also looking at potentially enhancing the weekly reporting that we receive from the golf course to strengthen what we, what we know from rain checks and our exposure there. The second one is tax office terminals. This is, the tax office has three computers, if you've ever been in there. One of them on the side was specifically for water. You could take tax money in, but that was the only place you could pay for water and sewer. With three people in the tax office, the idea was each one would have an assigned terminal, a login, and you'd be able to tie everything back to that terminal. We certainly couldn't do that with the third terminal, because everybody had to be able to take water and sewer. Having now outsourced the water and sewer function, the tax office is actively acquiring the equipment, scanners and other things. And once that's in place, each one of them will be assigned a terminal, and we'll follow what is in there.
So we'll have three terminals now?
Of three terminals.
That's just wonderful.
They actually have three terminals now.
Well, I mean, we'll have them in use on that two or three days before the rush.
Absolutely.
Because I have stood there a few times myself.
Absolutely.
So that's great.
The next two are capital assets. The accounting system, we are working with... The accounting system, we are working with our outsourced vendor, there's one more enhancement that is needed. We are on a schedule with Tyler, who is our outsourced vendor. For Q3 of 2019, we're trying to move that up, but it's an enhancement that we need in order to move from a standalone separate system into the integrated accounting system. Basically, the accounting system wasn't coded to be able to handle the accounting that was needed for depreciating assets. We had to use an alternative system. We've been working with them to create, to bring in the enhancements that are needed so that we can integrate it completely and have one system. And then the thresholds tied into this, our standalone system doesn't support different thresholds, so until we make that move, we can't change the thresholds. Once we make the move, we completely agree and we'll change the thresholds at that point. And then lastly, the recommendation about multiple ledgers, you know, for two of the Board of Ed funds. These are funds that are exclusively handled within the Board of Ed and so the Board of Ed will handle, start to finish, and then they will pass that on so that we can simply consolidate that into the financial reports. That process was started beginning in January. If there's any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. We have not ranked, there's no motion on this one? No, just honestly. Thank you. Thank you for the
I can go as quickly as I could because you're presenting.
No, no, no. I can hear that. Okay, so we are, mental appointments. Yeah. So. Okay, so, this is the Board of Ethics is first, well, let's, if we could, yeah, we got one, let's do that one right now because there's maybe some changes.
The Board of Ethics, I'm going to nominate Kevin Hines, move him up to regular instead of an alternate.
Thank you for the nomination. Any other nominations? Hearing none, close nominations, all those in favor of Kevin?
Aye.
Aye. All those? Moved. Ethics, we're going to, I'm not, some, here. Yeah, but, so, um, conservation? Somebody else? Oh, that's it. Yeah, so, oh. Yeah, that's it. Oh, he wants inland words, I'm sorry. He wants inland. Okay, okay. So we have no, that, I'll look on the console. Economic development, there's some other names that came in, I know there's another name or two coming in, so what I asked the chairman, Dave's here to do is just talk to the different possible candidates. I think there's two slots there, so, I think we have plenty of names now and there's another name coming in, I guess, too, so. I asked him in the next two weeks if we could talk to all those people and, you know, see what he thinks, since they will be serving on his commission and then we can get maybe some input back to the council, we could make those appointments next meeting. Okay, so we got, so we have one for that?
Or not, or an alternate.
No, ours, yeah.
So I'll nominate Frederick White for Inland Weapons Water Course Commission.
Alternate? Number 14.
Or number 13, right?
Number 13 can't be filled by, oh, okay.
So, any list? I'll read that.
That's okay. That's true, you mean.
That's okay. Those one more, too, right?
I thought there was somebody else, right?
Yeah. Mr. Philippon, right? I have that one. To nominate Philippon for the other spot, right? I can't find that, I put his name here, I just can't find exactly.
Did I mention it?
It's in your packet, I just can't find it right now.
I don't see it, Water Control Commission, or just put it on back.
I'm sorry, what's his name?
Can't put him in either, right? Philippon?
Water Control.
If he's a Republican, we can't put him in. So. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, for Roland?
No, for Philippon, but he's a Republican and we can't put him in there.
Right.
Because it has to be D or U.
Oh, for the, for the regular.
Oh, wait a minute, this is Water Control Commission, right?
Yeah.
I thought it was Inland Weapons.
Okay, that's all right.
My fault. It's contagious, Kate.
I know.
I'm in there, I'm going to put, nominate Mr. Philippon for the Water Control Commission.
Okay.
So there, we'll just get a bunch, that's okay.
Thank you for that nomination. Any further nominations? Hearing none, close nominations, all of them in favor of Mr., what's his name?
Philippon.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, congratulations. All right, so, where are we at now? Nothing, nothing apart from that? What are we down to? V and Z?
We have some V and A people, too. So we'll work our way back up the other way, so I'll go to V and A. I would like to nominate Leanne Carlson for the first vacancy in the V and A.
Okay, thank you for that nomination. Any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none, close nominations, all in favor of that candidate?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, congratulations.
And for the other vacancy, I will nominate Brenda Chira for the second vacancy in the V and A.
Is she taken for Republican chair for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in here, I know there's a lot of.
Yeah, I just, I guess, my neighbor. I think it was added in the.
Is that one added today?
I think when you got.
We got it now.
Yeah, we got the.
No, it wasn't one of the ones.
Oh, it wasn't, okay, it was there. Yeah.
She doesn't work still at the V and A, does she?
What's she saying there, Karen?
She said, worked for the V and A, could be, so does she still work for the V and A?
That's a good question. Does it say on there?
It says worked.
Yeah.
Past tense, but I just want to be sure, she's not working here anymore.
Yeah. Well, let's ask, yeah, we'll ask her, we'll do it next time. Yeah.
Just to be honest, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm sorry, the opinion.
No, 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 I, you know, can ask her. I mean, I'm guessing she doesn't, but you never know.
Yeah, it does say past tense.
Yeah, yeah.
Better to double check.
Wait. Where we did that one?
Oh, you did, yeah.
Too many left, Alex, too many. Too many people can do this. Okay, where are we at now?
P and Z, I guess, right?
P and Z, yes, P and Z.
I got a call from Bruce Moore.
Yes.
And he asked to be nominated. He's in Florida, he's out of state, so I would like to, if we're doing number 20, I want to jump the gun there.
Um, 20, is that the number?
That's the first one.
Yes. Okay. We don't have his application though, right? All this time, he couldn't get the application?
Well, he's out of state. I mean, he's been doing it for 26 years.
So it's just re, replacement term or reappointment, it's not like he's new?
Right.
Well, he's still got to be nominated.
Well, I'm nominating.
Okay.
I'll nominate Bruce Moore, number 20.
Okay, thank you. Do we have other nominations?
I will nominate Tim Zigmond.
Okay.
And how many positions available?
Those are the same one.
For the same one?
Three.
There's three, there's a, there's two regular. So that would be for this position. Okay, so, we have two nominations, we'll take a vote.
Councilor Adal Kesten?
I'm going to abstain, I don't know, excuse me.
Okay.
Councilor Giannoni?
So, the choices are?
It would be either Commissioner Moore or Tim Zigmond.
Okay. Tim Zigmond, sorry.
Okay.
Councilor Luddy?
Mr. Zigmond.
Councilor Paffiero?
Mr. Moore.
Councilor, uh, Peanessa?
Mr. Zigmond.
Councilor Russell?
Mr. Moore.
And Mayor Densky?
Mr. Zigmond.
Mr. Zigmond has been.
Okay.
So, is there 21 available?
Yes, there is.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Bruce Moore.
Okay. Are there other nominations for 21?
Sure, I am going to nominate Diane Jorsy.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we have two nominations. Okay.
Councilor Adal Kesten?
Staying.
Councilor Giannoni?
Diane Jorsy.
Councilor Luddy?
Ms. Jorsy.
Councilor Paffiero?
Mr. Moore.
Councilor Peanessa?
Diane Jorsy.
Councilor Russell?
Mr. Moore.
Mayor Densky?
Diane Jorsy.
Councilor, I mean, Mr. Jorsy, if you could.
So 22 is open?
Yes.
I nominate Bruce Moore.
Now, that's, is that the alternate?
Yeah.
That's the alternate, I nominate.
Now, what about Kevin Murphy?
Well, you nominated, they nominated someone else for that position. That was, that's, right, you nominated, I guess, those two people nominated, I don't know. Kevin got knocked out.
I'm going to nominate Mr. Leo Menard for that alternate spot, keep him there.
Does it say it can only be a D or a U?
I'm sorry?
It says here, no, regular member can only be a D or a U, so you?
Right.
She's a U.
She's a U.
So she can be appointed.
Yeah, but for number 22?
For number 22, it was that Mr. Menard would like to have been appointed as a regular member but could not be. He is a registered Republican.
So, for this position, can it be an R, D, or U?
Yes.
Okay, just was wondering.
All right, we have one nomination, Mr. Menard. Any other nominations?
Yeah, Kevin Murphy.
Okay.
I also nominated Bruce Moore for the alternate position. Yeah, I did.
Oh, okay, both. Okay.
I did.
Okay, so we have?
Three.
Three, okay. All right, so, okay, Kate.
Yep. Okay, so your choices are for Mr. Menard, Mr. Murphy, or Mr. Moore. Councilor Adal Kesten?
Mr. Murphy.
Councilor Giannoni?
Leo Menard.
Councilor Luddy?
Leo Menard.
Councilor Paffiero?
Mr. Moore.
Councilor Peanessa?
Leo Menard.
Councilor Russell?
Kevin Murphy.
Mayor Densky?
Leo Menard.
Mr. Menard is reappointed as an alternate.
All right, thank you. Is that it? That's it, right? Is that all?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. Comment, George?
All right, I've given a brief report there, you know, through it. Last Thursday, we had a meeting to discuss the V and A, it was requested by Mr. Paradise of the Board of Finance, Manny Russo, Kevin Malaney, Councilor Paffiero, and myself, and we just talked, discussed the V and A financial situation. We are, as a staff, putting, are working to put together a document for a business plan. I think the question is, so they are, they're returning, losing money, the revenue does not cover their expenses, and we want to put together a document that will show going forward what the plan is to reduce that deficit. And we'll bring it forward as part of the budget this year. And this is an update, I don't, this will probably get some conversation open, senior center does, community center grant, we have returned that, the wording changes, I just wanted to let you know there is no change. We sent that back to the state, we're waiting for their draft, change back to us, and once we get that, we'll go through the process of having it reviewed by our attorney and then if it works well, we'll have to come back to the town council, so that you can update my signature authority to sign the contract. The bids did come in for the JSL project, they were within budget and they will be presented at the next town council meeting for approval. Also, the next meeting, the Public Building Commission will come to the next meeting to give you, give a presentation on the police station facilities report, looking at the space on the first floor of this building. The water control and the Worth of Fire District, we've had, we had a meeting a couple weeks ago and we talked about doing things cooperatively to improve water service and sewer service within the town. One of the things that was one of my main concerns were, was the lack of residual chlorine in one section of the town. We have agreed upon opening a valve which will loop that section of town along Northern Road. That valve has been opened. We'll do some evaluation in a month to see whether residual chlorine comes up to where we believe it should be and we'll take appropriate action at that time. They actually, will be, as long as it goes where we think, leave the valve open and then make a, put a meter in there. The Water Control Commission, the staff on the, who work for the Water Control are going to be senior staff, put it that way. And so we're looking at a way of bringing in new staff. It's difficult to get people to work in these, in these areas, so what we just decided to do is to offer an apprentice program for town employees who wanted to give it a try. So what we've done is we've opened up, they had five interviews today and we had, I believe, five or six people who work for the town, applied to be a, to be apprentices. I believe that Ray and the Public Works Department decided to allow all, all five or six to give it a try and they'll have like one week assignment to work down there to see whether or not they, they like that type of work. We feel it's a good way of, it's a good opportunity for our employees, we've got, it's a move out for many of our employees to work for the Water and Sewer Department. And as, as people retire, it's a good way to backfill those positions, they'll have some background in the, in the work and it's a way of promoting our employees within the town. So, we're going to start that process on, that program in the next couple of weeks. They all were interviewed today and I believe all of the applicants are going forward. Tomorrow, we are interviewing an intern candidate again for the Water and Sewer to help Ray. There's just a lot of, there's a lot of records, a lot of information that's there. Also, there's a lot of updating that needs to be done to make the, to determine, understand where all the water sewer lines are in the town. We decided that it was a good opportunity to have a work study in our intern candidate, so we are interviewing a candidate tomorrow and if that person fits the bill, she will be brought on board for the summer to work, I believe it's 10 or 12 weeks for the Water and Sewer. She, the applicant currently is a, is a civil engineering student, she's at Bruce Politek and we're going to interview her tomorrow. Per the ordinance committee request at their last meeting, I talked with the police, they are increasing their inspection device levels. They are now doing inspections, I suppose, depending on part. There was a discussion about whether or not there were quads and other vehicles going up there, so I talked to the chief and I believe that those inspections have, have started to take place. I didn't put it on, the next ordinance committee meeting is next Tuesday at 6:30.
That day?
Okay.
What's that date?
12.
That's all, yeah, 12, okay. Are we, yeah, are we good, is that the one?
Yeah. I just want to make it, put it out there, make sure it's good.
We're good on the 12? The time we say 6:30?
6:30 is it.
You good?
I'm going.
You, you, here? That's Tuesday, that's Tuesday.
Yeah.
That's good, yeah.
So, we?
Uh, yes. We're all good? We're good?
Thank you. We have begun contract negotiations. Most of the unit contracts have been settled over the last couple of years, we have one remaining, and so this year, we have just one to work through, and we've begun negotiation with the Mid-Mana Commission, we're just starting to exchange paperwork. And then the last thing is, we are, as a staff, we're updating the personnel policy in the town's vehicle policy. These, I believe the last update was 2001, so we are working to complete all of the town policies. We actually are looking, we go over the steel, the soul, and we're looking at AVONS, and we're using that as a template and comparing ours to the AVONS and inserting what we think we need to make ours a four or four comprehensive update. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jim. Okay, so special committee reports, we have nothing, right? No, so we'll have our meeting next week.
Jack, do you want to check, we're still on the Plainfield's committee meeting on the 14th, six o'clock, that was the last email, I think someone responded to it. I don't know who was confirmed. That's what I had. Sounds like Peter has some questions. All right.
Yeah.
Okay, 14th? I will get it. Six o'clock. We'll confirm that for you.
Okay. Fourteenth?
Yeah.
You guys are brave.
Well, that's right, yeah. Just lonely.
Not just lonely? It is, you know, it's valid. Doesn't care about valid. That's right.
It's written in the paper.
Yeah.
It's in your center of notes.
Better you than me. Okay, so, that's that. So Council Communications, what do we have to say? Anyone? Anything, 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 nothing?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to congratulate Nathaniel for making the whole meeting.
Oh.
applaud your endurance.
Yeah, I made you stay, I guess, huh? You couldn't get out of here, huh?
It's part of the American.
Oh, there we go. So there's a reason, I figured that, yeah, right.
We'll side off on it.
That's two. Yeah, that's two.
It should have been your Eagle Scout project.
You're a brave young, brave young man, that's what I think. Sit through this, yes, very good. What else? Anything else? We good? All right, we are on to our acceptance of minutes, so we have the January 22nd, take a motion on that.
Okay, I will make the motion to accept the January 22nd, 2019 Town Council Meeting Minutes.
Second, thank you very much, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Removed. And now we will make a motion to go into executive session at eight thirty-five.